So, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Sutra Utama Toastmaster Meeting 112th meeting today. And I'm Adeline here and be SAA tonight. Before we begin the meeting, I need to double check we now without any guests. So shall we share a way to start our meeting right now? So, Joe Master, can you share the slide? Thank you. Before we begin the meeting, please switch on your phone on silent mode and mute when you are not speaking. And please turn on your video on whole meeting. And please sit in good posture and enjoy our meeting tonight. Continue, Joe Master. In one whole meeting, we have video release consent. And we will video, uh, video whole meeting. Next, please. And now, shall we invite our acting president Max to opener, his opening address? Please welcome acting president Max. Please give him a round of applause.
Hello, everyone. Good evening to all members and guests. I'm just filling in to deliver the presidency address on behalf of our president Claire, who is easily, is feeling very well today. So, today's theme, Year Ends Reflection holds a special meaning for me personally. When I joined this club early this year, public speaking was my biggest fear and it still is. But the difference between the peer then and now is I've delivered multiple prepared speeches. I've became emcee for our grand anniversary celebration, appointed to ex-school member. And now I'm here delivering the presidential address on behalf of our president. So, I guess what doesn't, what doesn't kill you makes you stronger. And I've seen similar progress in other members that I've observed during my time here. The, and the obvious one, like Wei Jing and Chunyi, who they are way more confident now compared to when I met, first met them already this year. And do you guys agree? So, when I look back and reflect, it's really inspiring to see these changes. And this is a testament to the power of transformation our club can provide to its members. And tonight, we have a special section on our agenda. Our ex-school member and BPE Eric has decided to step down from this role. So, we have to conduct an election to choose our next BPE. But before we proceed, I would like to thank Eric for his time and energy while serving as our BPE. And my personality, he has always, he always has a way to encourage the members to step out of their comfort zone that has helped many of us to grow, including myself. And of course, to help him filling up all those meeting and event roles. So, without further ado, I'll hand over the control to our immediate past president Jason, Jason Chang, to conduct the special general meeting. Jason, over to you.
Thank you, acting president Max Mahindran. Now, good evening to beloved members. Thank you for your time for joining our special business meeting. Today, I will be representing our current club president, leadership development level five Claire Tan due to her sickness and could not really speak well for today. And also not presiding for this session. The purpose of this meeting is that the ESCO has announced the resignation of our vice president of education, who is Toastmasters Eric Lo. We thanks him for his contribution and valuable service in the beginning of these few months. And he still remain as an active member of our club. And I am sure to you, we shall now conduct a special election for the office of Vice President of Education, also known as BPE. Our ESCO has nominated Wong Wei Jing for the office of BPE. May I have someone to second this nomination? Okay, Xiong has seconded Wong Wei Jing as the one, as the nominee for Vice President of Education. Can you give your second speech of this nominee?
Yeah, hello. I'd like to propose Wei Jing as a replacement for Eric because he was a helper before this, um, helper to Eric before this. And he did well and he actually have a good good linking with the members. I like his smile. So, I think this one is good to link, make a link with the all the members, current members, new members, very friendly, very approachable. Yeah, please support him.
Thank you, Xiong. I shall now open the nomination to the floor. Do we have any floor nomination?
I would like to nominate Masaji as our BPE. Listen, thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone seconded for Lyhox? Nomination? Wasagi as nominee for the floor nomination? Yes, if?
I know you want to second the nomination. I already rejected.
Okay, before I ask Wasagi, would you like to accept this position if elected, or he, you rejected?
I'm so sorry. I'm rejecting the offer. I'm really sorry.
No, okay. Thank you, Wasagi. Other than Wasagi, is there any floor nomination anymore? Yes, if done? Your line is breaking up. Who are? Max, okay. Toastmaster Max Mahindran, would you like to accept this position if elected?
I would like to decline nomination.
Thank you, Max. If no, then I should entertain a motion to close the floor nomination. May I have a seconded to close this motion?
A seconded to close the motion.
Yes.
Election chairman, I propose a motion to close nomination.
Thank you, Jeku Bernard. Since there's only one nominee, but may I invite our nominee Wong Wei Jing? Because he has been nominated by the ESCO for the office of BPE. Wong Wei Jing, are you there?
Yes.
You are given two minutes to speak on your behalf for the election speech. So, timer? Please ready.
Thank you for inviting me. And first of all, thank you for, uh, member to, uh, to nominate me to be the Vice President of Education. And, and for me, I know that, that, uh, every member that they have their own best speed or goal to, to joining the Toastmaster. Maybe for, for myself, my personality is to self-improvement in Tamil English and leadership and also the speaking skill. Uh, other than that, I also gaining a like happiness in joining this club. And, and I joined this Toastmaster is about one and a half year. I found that those value in our club and I enjoy as a happy member. So, and and I felt there is a time to, uh, to compete, to contribute for our club. And actually, I know that the BPE is a difficult role and task for me. And, and I promise that I try my best to the ability to let all of you, uh, to gain the benefit of the Toastmaster. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Wei Jing, for your speech. Since there's only one nominee and also I would like to inform secretary to take this into our special meetings minutes that we have achieved the addendum for this special meeting. May I need secretary to cast a single Zoom ballot for the candidate? All club members, you are encouraged to cast your important ballots. Three more people to complete their polls. One more. Oh, okay. Now we shall close the polls for the nominee Wong Wei Jing. Yes, I now I shall announce that Wong Wei Jing has been elected for Vice President of Education by the majority of our club member for Sutra Utama Toastmaster Club. Wei Jing, I wish you all the best and hope you can put all your efforts in making our club great again and make many triple crown in next term. Now, I shall pass the Toastmaster, I shall urgent this special business meeting and pass the control to our Toastmaster of the evening, Toastmaster Jacqueline Chang to take over the control. Over to you.
Thank you, Jason Chang. A very pleasant Wednesday evening to fellow Toastmasters and distinguished guests. Welcome to Sutra Utama Toastmasters Club. My name is Jacqueline Chang and I'm honoured to be your Toastmasters of the evening. Today, we will be doing year-end reflections. Year 2024 is vanishing and year 2025 is emerging. As another year of your life grows over, it's time to reflect and hope for a brighter future. There are some excellent quotes I would like to share with you all. The laughter and tears of yesterday start fresh with the dawn of a new year. All the days of the past year have prepared you for the new tomorrow. You are the writer of your life. A new chapter is just waiting to be written. As for me, this year started, started with my joining Toastmasters, where I have been exploring my strengths and weaknesses. Speaking with ease and expressiveness is challenging. But Sutra Utama Toastmaster Club offers munificent encouragement and provides the mechanism for me to take stock for a better self. I'm looking forward to a significant growth next year. Before I move on, I invite you all to suggest one word to describe the past year and one word to express your wish for the next year. For example, you may type like this. Okay, could you respond to my questions? One word to describe your past year, one word for the next year. Okay, today we don't have any guests. Shall I skip the introduction to the history of Toastmasters Club? Okay, I just read the history, okay, for all of you. Uh, if you haven't got to know the history of Toastmasters Club. Toastmaster was founded by Dr. Raf C. Smackley on October 22nd, 1924 at the YMCA in Santa Ana, California, when there was a need of improving communication management and leadership skills in the community. Today, Toastmasters is a worldwide nonprofit educational organisation that empowers people to become more effective speakers, communicators and, uh, and leaders. Next, I will show, introduce Pathways Programme. Pathways learning experience is Toastmasters Education Programme, which is designed to help members build the competencies to communicate and lead. It has six specialised learning paths as shown to choose from. You may choose the path that led us to you, to your current goals. Next, I will introduce the meeting structure. A typical Toastmaster Club meeting consists of three main segments. Prepared speech session. Members deliver project speeches. Table topic session, known as impromptu speeches. All audiences, members and guests get to speak on their own feet based on the topic selected on the spot. Evaluation session, feedback will be given to project speakers. Next. Next, I will be introducing some appointment holders tonight who will assist in the running of today's session. Please laugh at the camera when your name is called upon so everybody can identify you. All right, okay, let's see. Okay, first of all, we have our elegant club member Sergeant at Arms Kam Photographer, Presentation Mastery Tree Attentive, who has assisted in kick-starting tonight's programme. Um, Claire Tan, our president, will be assisting in the photographing session to capture our joyful moments for this meeting. Next, we have our engineer, Zoom Master. Uh, we have our Zoom Master, uh, designer, Toastmaster, We Peng Hao. Okay, can you, uh, right, just, uh, laugh to others to help ensure the virtual meeting runs smoothly? Next, our sharp timer of the day, Strategic Relationship Level One, Tang We Ming, will help keep track of the time and ensure the meeting runs according to schedule. Introduce to you our art curator, Toastmaster Wasagi, who will take note of all the pause fillers like ah, um, la, sastra used by our speakers. To monitor the exemplary as well as improper use of language, we have our grammarian Innovative Planning Level Three, Bernard Wong. Please help me to welcome our Jeku Bernard to share with us the word of the day and idiom of the day. Over to you, Bernard.
Thank you, Toastmaster Evening, Jacqueline, for the introduction. For today's meeting, the word of the day is munificent. Munificent, let's say it together, munificent. It is a verb, is an adjective, a verb, meaning extremely liberal in giving, or very generous. Example of his usage in a sentence, his munificent gift to the, to the charity allowed it to expand its programmes to help even more families. The synonyms of this word are benevolent, bountiful, generous and charitable. The antonyms are opposite, meaning careful, greedy, mean, selfish and stingy. The idiom of the day is take stock, which means to carefully think about something to decide what to do next. The example of his usage, he needed a period of peace and quiet to take stock of his life. With that, I encourage every speaker during this meeting to use the word of the day and the idiom of the day. Thank you, over to you.
Thank you, Jeku Bernard. He's our English teacher of the day. Last but not least, our general evaluator, Presentation Mastery One, Paul Sample, will keep an eager eye overseeing the meeting and conducting the evaluation session. Here or whenever possible, please include word of the day. Today, the word of the day is munificent. An idiom of the day takes stock into your upcoming speech. Best of luck. Next. There we go to the prepared speeches session. Yeah, moving on to one of the most important sections, segments in a Toastmasters meeting, prepared speech session. Our first speaker this evening will be delivering her level one project evaluation and feedback. Second speech from Presentation Mastery Pathway. The purpose of this project is to practice applying feedback and serve as a speech evaluator during a club meeting. The purpose of this speech is for the member to demonstrate their ability to deliver an effective, respectful speech evaluation. The evaluator for this project is Presentation Mastery Four, Goi Lyhok. His year-end reflection is life is unpredictable, so cherish the people in your life at all times. The time allocation for this speech is five to seven minutes. May I please have the timer demonstrate the timing sequence with me? Ready? At the fifth minute, the green screen will be displayed. At the sixth minute, the yellow screen will be displayed. At the seventh minute, the red screen will be displayed. At the seventh minute fifteen seconds, a bell will be sound. The speech title is Reflections of Growth, A Teacher's Journey. The speaker is an excellent teacher, a deufluencer, check good jara digital, active in action research at international level and previously served as VP PR. The objective of joining Toastmasters is to become a good speaker. Please help me to welcome Toastmaster Himarani, Reflections of Growth, A Teacher's Journey. Reflections of Growth, A Teacher's Journey, Himarani.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening, fellow Toastmaster and guests. May I know any, uh, anyone share the slide, the screen? Okay, let me continue my speech. As the year draws to a close, we often pause to stock of our accomplishments, challenges and the movements that have defined us. Tonight, I stand before you as a teacher, mentor and most importantly, a lifelong learner reflecting on a journey of growth that has been as rewarding as it has been humbling. Looking at the collage of moments on the screen, one might see certificates, awards and happy faces. But to me, these images represent something far deeper. The munitions of the teaching profession, the boundless generosity of mind, of time, effort and spirit that shapes lives and transform futures. As a teacher for special needs students, I learned that teaching is not just about transferring knowledge. It's about giving, giving encouragement when a student struggles, giving patience when progress is slow and giving hope when challenges is uninsurmountable. Along this journey, one of the proudest moment of my journey this year was mentoring a group of educators at school for several competition and one of is Joho State Action Research Coliseum. Seeing her win top awards, including the second round up Best Pepper Award and the champion for the best presenter in Joho State level. It was a powerful reminder of how munificent teaching can be. Her success wasn't just hers. It was a collective victory, a ripple effort of guidance, collaboration and perseverance. Another notable achievement is the Fort Research Professional Learning Community. We call as a PLC and Educational Innovation Convention of the Meti Coalition Programme, Ministry of Education Malaysia 2024, known as CONPI for 2024, which awarded a consolation prize at the national level. There are twenty-five participants, twenty-four of whom are from Meti Coalition and we are the only ones from the school. Taking our work to the next level was a great movement, movement. As I reflect of this year, I take stock of not only the achievement but the lesson they represent. The awards, the regulations are wonderful, yes, but truly matter is the journey, the brainstorm session, the trial and error and the resilience in the face of setbacks. For instance, receiving the Global Up certification for representing special education on the international platform was a milestone. But the true reward was is my sharing my student story with the world and realising that their determination resonates universally. Apart from this, serving as a judge for innovation projects for this year also reminded me of the importance of nurturing creativity and innovation. I witnessed ideas that then guided and polished had the potential to make a real difference in education. This experience just reinforced my belief that teaching is as just about inspiring as it about educating. But the journey is not without its challenges. Every year, I ask myself, have I done enough? Have I been the teacher of my students needed? These questions keep me grounded and remind me that growth is a continuous process. One lesson I've learned in that success is not a solo endeavor. Behind every achievement is that college are students who are there to dream, colleagues who supported me and mentors who believed in me. Together, we create a community where growth Together, we create a community where growth thrives and possibilities flourish. Another lesson is the power of adaptability. This year, I embraced project-based learning, we call as a PLC, sorry, PBL, and creative teaching methods to reach my students in new ways. It wasn't always easy, but the rewards were immense, seeing the students who once struggled now try training, expressing themselves with confidence. As educator, I don't just shape individuals, I shape communities. The programs, project, and initiatives I've been part of this year have reminded me that my work transcends the classroom. It's about creating a better, more inclusive future for all. I am particularly proud of the collaborative efforts to promote innovation in education. Whether it's tough, sorry, whether it's through actual research, global advocacy, or mentoring others. I see teaching as a ripple effort. One act of kindness, one word of encouragement can inspire countless others. As this year comes to an end, I encourage all of us to take stock of our own journeys. Celebrate the victories, no matter how small, learn from the challenges, no matter how daunting. And above all, the and above all, be munificent with your time, your kindness, and your belief in others. The picture you see are not just milestone, there are stories of growth and impact we can have been be choose to give. As a teacher, mentor, and we as a Toastmaster, we have the power to inspire change one step at a time. Here's the new year filled with purpose, passion, and progress. Maybe continue, reflect, inspire, uplift, and make a difference. Thank you, over to you, Tia.
Okay, let's come to the second speaker now. Thank you for Hima's good speech, a very inspiring sharing. The slide, I can see the slide from my side. Our second speaker will be delivering his level two project introduction to Toastmasters mentoring from the motivational strategies pathway. The purpose of this project is for the member to clearly define how Toastmasters envision mentoring. The purpose of this speech is for the member to share some aspects of a previous experience as a procedure. The evaluation for this project is motivational strategies for Raymond Chin. He is also a company director. We'll skip the timer demonstration as the timing sequence will be the same as the first speech. The speech title is The Power of Mentoring. The speaker works in the property management industry, specifically managing residential buildings. His year-end reflection is to cultivate greater focus and our times time effectively to achieve his goals. Please help me to welcome dynamic leadership level four, Wong Wei Jing. The power of mentoring, the power of mentoring, Wong Wei Jing.
Thank you, the inspiration from our DME today. And lady and gentleman, may I know who can drive in? Who had that lesson and ability to drive? No matter you had lesson or no lesson, you, if you can drive, you can raise out your hand or reply me a yes in the group. Yes. So when you try to go in a place that you are not familiar with, you totally don't know how to go in there, what would you do? For me, of course, open out the GPS, yes, asking people. So for me, I will open the west of Google Map who go the place I wish to reach there. So mentor is also like a Google or West in this scenario. When we know where we wish to go, mentor can give a direction, bring us to going the right place. And and the definition for mentor, there is a person who can share their own experience to encourage each other to bring them to a higher level and reach their goal. When you are lost or do not have any idea to doing something, they can give you a guide and a direction to go the place you wish to reach. So I am fortunate have a mentor in my life and reflecting for the six month before. I'm invited to join a running activity at the morning. You try to imagine that normally I have wake up on seven AM and Sunday is only then I can sleep without uh setting an alarm. So in this scenario, do you think I will accept that to join a morning running session? And the schedule at seven AM, I need to go even more earlier than than the arrangement, normally the my workout time. Ah. So, but of course, I will say yes, because this been for 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 that. And to to join this running activity, my expectation is is a thirty-minute running session and then after that following by a breakfast session. Ah, but the real situation is the person invite me, they bring me to run for two hour and ten kilometer. Well, so at the moment, every second in my mind, I will say that I hope got somebody jumping out and say, we will stop today and we try to running back. Ah, this is my mind, but the rest, the what happened is we keep going until we reach the place and and until two hour. So the person is uh Eric. Ah. Six months before, Eric invited me to try a running uh in the morning and I felt uh fortunate that because I'm the person need to be invited. And it's totally start out my running journey in this year because of Eric. And he is, he is quite important uh for me in the running journey. When I am the beginner, he he totally used their their whatever route he can use to encourage encourage me to keep the momentum up in the running. And be able to share their own experience to how uh using the posture to run and how to save energy to have a long distance running. And also he demonstrated their leadership, not only through the the sharing their experience, he also showing by action to show how they are, they are doing the the right on the real on the action. No matter, no matter all the running activity invited or not invited by him, he is a person come to the place most earlier. So, and this, this is how he impact for me to have a running journey and it's also is a key opinion leader. He gave the uh all of us to joining a half marathon. And he lead a small community to to drive the event. So I wish to share a picture for that. Okay, this is the last time he invited of us to join the half marathon. Uh, I think it's one or two month already and and it able to encourage us and leading us to to complete this journey. Ah, there is about thirty-one kilometer and we have to complete me within the uh four hour and thirty minute. Ah, and all of us uh successfully complete this half marathon. Uh, please help me give a a pro for Eric, even though he's not in here and and I I wish to thank him to to have the uh guidance for this. Okay. A good mentor is transform me from someone from nothing to a person you wish to achieve. And and recall that before I totally cannot run and now I have the ability to joining and complete a half marathon. I can say without a mentor, I cannot achieve that with my own energy. Who and my work, uh just say you go, find a good mentor and stay patient until your success. Thank you.
Thank you, Wong Wei Jing, for bringing Eric so lively in front of us. Our next speaker, our third speaker, will be delivering her level two project. Know your sense of humor from the engaging humor pathway. The purpose of this project is to begin developing a collection of humorous stories and to present a speech that includes humor. The evaluator for this project is Toastmaster Himarani Munisami. We'll skip the timer demonstration as the timing sequence will be the same as the last speaker. The speech title is Lessons Learned. The speaker is an engineer who works closely with product designers and is keen to seek better presentation skills. Twenty twenty-four is a busy year for her, so she is planning a short inner piece right away from the year ends, before the year ends. Please help me to welcome presentation mastery level four, Xiong Hui Ping. Lessons Learned, Lessons Learned, Xiong Hui Ping.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Jacqueline. I would like to make a poll here. Anybody here have any idea in your house, how many light bulbs are there in your house? Make a wild guess, light bulbs, the lighting? Your living hall, your dining area, kitchen, bathroom? Outside? Yeah, I see twenty, thirty, many, yeah, sure, many. Max only twelve. Just now I have a rough walkthrough. My house has about thirty-four light bulbs. I'm staying in a double-story terrace house. Inside and outside about thirty-four. Later on after this session, you might have a walk and then you go to town. The story like this. I have one bulb, which is I like it very much. It is a vintage style, vintage style means uh is somehow like a designer light. It has a toy designed that it gives up a yellow light. It is incandescent light bulb. It's something like a tungsten light, like the old timer tungsten light is a orange color. So it make your house feel very cozy, very warm. And one day, I decided to give a cleaning for this bulb. Because this bulb has been there for a long time. But unfortunately, I've broken the the adapter, not the bulb, the light bulb no problem, but the adapter, the plastic adapter. So it dropped down. So because it was my favorite light bulb, so I want to get it repaired. So I asked my my best partner here, my not certified electrician to help me.
Shall we wait for a while? I think Xiong's wifi has some problem. Uh, the light is not stay, but now actually the screen is hanging, it's not moving.
Oh, you mean my my screen is freeze?
I think your screen is fine, maybe Jacqueline's ones are freezing.
I I continue?
Yes, you can do this.
Yeah. So my my not certified electric- electrician, he went up to buy the adapter, but to to our surprise, actually the adapter had few designs. So we think we brought along the 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 bulb, so we thought this design is okay, so we bought and then we went back to our house. But unfortunately, it cannot match inside, so we need to went to the shop again and to buy. Then came back home and to install. During installation, another challenge, the wiring space was so limited. Our fingers need to try to go inside because it's a designer light bulb, so it somehow have some shape. Then finally, a simple job, it took us about three hours to get it repaired. So that incident give me lesson learned. First lesson, let the professional do the job. For an electrician and your job will be done easier. Or second lesson, if you can find, you can marry a certified electrician. Because in your house, you have so many light bulbs, you can consider this one next time for those who haven't married. And the third lesson learned is I shall get a cleaning mat to do the professional job. I shall not do the the job myself. So this is a lesson I get from this incident. And another lesson, I learned that I want to talk to myself and also other engineers because I'm an engineer myself. So I think I'm thinking of as an engineer, we can change the world. So we can do something more standardized. So if I I believe the design have many types because to meet a different requirement. But at least there's an easier communication, let's say you have a type A of a bulb, then you have a type A of adapter. It shall communicate very clearly, return the A, then you know you need to buy the A. Then this one will make the life easier for everybody next time. So after I found out I was not a good at the, I was not good with the light bulb. Then I diverted my attention to my kids. I think how many, I think we have a fifty fifty percent of our audience here, how many members? I think how many, I think we have a fifty fifty percent of our audience here, how many members have a kids? One, two, three, four, oh, less than fifty percent, five. Oh, Jessica, you have a kid. I thought you are still single. You look so young. Alright. So those having a kid and those haven't yet have a kid, you please learn from my stories. I have two kids and one kid in a primary school. So how many of you teaching your own kids academic? Anybody? Nobody? Good. I, oh, Jessica, again, alright. Okay. I'm not good at electrician knowledge, but for mathematics, I'm confident. So I think my level of mathematics, I can teach mathematics uh teachers, primary school. Student, so I teach him mathematics. But to my surprise, along my teaching, my voice become louder and louder. My passion lost. And finally, we both end up in not good relationship. So the lesson learned here is again, let the professional do the job, let the tuition teacher do the job. So that the mother is not anxious and the son is more relaxed. Because professional are trained, just like uh our teacher Hemarani. Treators are trained, they have a techniques and system to make the student understand. The topic easier. With this, I end my presentation. Thank you. Back to you, Jacqueline, E M E.
Thank you, Xiong Huiping. Thank you for your heartfelt sharing, your precious moments and the lessons learned. Uh it takes talk to consider Marion and electrician just for the light repair. That's why I wonder, okay? So now, here our prepared speech session has been over. Uh so I call upon the timer to share with us his timers report. Can we mean?
Hi, I'm Alibor.
Yes.
Yes, uh this is my timer's report. Good evening. For prepared speech speaker one, hostmaster Hemarani, she used seven minutes and thirteen seconds. Speaker two, Wang Weijin, dynamic leadership four, he spoke for seven minutes and twenty eight seconds. Speaker three, Xiong Huiping, presentation mastery four, she spoke for eight minutes and eight seconds. And this had the pause in between has been excluded, so this is the net uh real. Real uh speech time. Uh with this, I'd like to announce that uh speaker one and two are eligible for. To be uh voted as the best speaker of the day. Thank you.
Thank you, timer. Now let's move on to the next session, which is table topic session. It's one of the table topic section is one of the most exciting section of a uh toastmasters meeting. Table topic session where members and guests get to participate in giving impactful speeches. The purpose of this project is to demonstrate the members' ability to listen to what others say. To done that, our table topic session, may I invite our table topics master up on screen? Let's welcome presentation mastery level five, Liang Yinyi. Liang Yinyi works in customer service. Her year end reflection says it was a year full of changes up and down. Time flies, which alerts her to spend more time with others. Thank you, uh yeah, uh over to you, table topics master.
Thank you, thank you, Jacqueline. Good evening, everyone. Uh before I start, I want to sound check. Am I audible? Okay. Alright, table topic to help members practice the art of improvisation and also helps us think on our face. So it's the people helps us develop for visual communication skill, which is listening, thinking, organizing, and delivering. So uh the topic that I prepared for you will hopefully help all of us become a better and. Improvisation and also uh my question today is about also similar, not similar. Um it's them, that's our year end reflection topic today, theme today. So everyone, for those who are not taking any roles yet, you can try. And grab this chance and try my question today. Alright, before uh we start, I would like to invite timer to do a timer sequence for this section. At one minute, the green background will show. At one minute thirty second, there's yellow background will show. And then at two minutes, the red screen will show. And there's at two minute and fifty second, there's another, it's about a show on timer screen. And you have another fifteen minutes to wrap up and then two minute and thirty second is come up. So everyone is clear, there is no guest today, it's okay. Everyone is clear, so like a thought, let me share my screen first. One ten, so far so I haven't start, okay, okay, I know who is the first. Well, I'll share my screen. Uh, okay. Today use another method, so I, sorry, sorry. So who want to be the first? Is it E J? I still appear. The table topic session, am I right? Alright, E J. Hey, alright, uh timer, may I know the screen? Can you show another kind of the background first? Now it's green screen, alright, uh E J? You may choose one topic.
Any numbers you have, six?
Six, yeah.
I take the one that cover by your head, which is number four.
Number four, he cover, okay, because I use another one method for this, alright. So E J, your question is, have you learned how to take better care of yourself in this year? Have you learned how to take better care of yourself in this year? Over to you, E J.
Thank you, table topic master. This is a very great questions. And I would like to say sorry about myself because I not taking care about you this year again. Apologies, E J, um I make you a bit disappointed. Which is uh you have be grow very well. To another fifteen KG from the day one of this year to now. And even though I have learned young Chun. Uh it's make you even stronger and harder to get down and the weight is continued before. I will be apologize to you again and I will be promise you, E J. Again, trust me, I will be bring you a better ship for twenty twenty five. But before that, um please remind that allow me another three weeks. To be better you. So if more enjoyment moment during the Christmas time. And trust me one more time. By next year twenty twenty five. I will certainly taking care of you very much. It's always numbers. And always there's a numbers. Do trust me, I will be remove all mirrors. I'll be change all my clothes to make you feel better ever. Even though the numbers is keep increasing. I just want you to have one more chance, just one more chance. To trust me again. Even though I had with realizing it many, many years. Again, next year, I will be taking care of you very, very carefully, E J. See you twenty twenty five. And let's have a supper. Thank you, bye bye.
Thank you so much, E J, for the sharing. Yeah, I, yeah, everyone comment on the chat, it's very funny when you use a poker face, but you, every single word is so funny for sharing. You so much, yeah, uh the reason that I choose this question is also, I also look. Asking, asking me back, ask myself that uh is. Am I taking the tech better for to for this year? I think it's no because sometimes I over. Very, very tired, I think I do too much and that I have no energy anymore. And focus on others, so this one is a another question. Is a reflection for everyone of you, whether you think that have you take better care of yourself to this year? Or no, how to do for next year? Alright, thank you so much, E J. Next, I would like to invite Jessica. Yeah, it's your turn.
Thank you for inviting me. I would like to goes with uh numbers, please.
Stick, number stick, will you?
Yes.
Alright, Jessica, your question is, what is one thing you accomplished this year that you are most proud of? What is one thing you accomplished this year that you are most proud of? Jessica, over to you.
Uh, thank you for your question. I think the most, the thing that made me feel most proud of this year is um. Balance of my life. I spare some time to join the English, English class. Like what I doing now. Actually, I wa- wanted to do it so long, but I'm worried so many is skill, like I'm very busy, I don't have enough time. Actually, I often spend my free time to surf TikTok and Facebook instead of learning. I feel very guilty, but this year I take uh one step out of my comfort zone to to study. To improve my knowledge and um make more new friend in my life. Uh for the past tell twelve year I live in Malaysia, but actually I don't have much a- activity. For this year, I have a new friend, for example, I met you, Weiwei. Uh and then you take me uh on the ride last time, we have uh. A talk in your car, I feel like I back to my my time when I live in Vietnam, I have a friend. I share, I talk, it made me feel very emotional when I talk about it. And then I also spend a time with my family more, I. Actually, I um, me and my daughter sleep separate uh when she was born. But for this year, I super busy at busy with my work, so I sleep with her every night. I told her the story at a nice story, so I mean I have time for my family more. So actually, uh to be at uh to be balanced uh about work, about life is, I think is impossible. It's how you feel only, you feel satisfied how you did only, it's never can be balanced. Actually, I quit one of activity that I'm very uh into, that's a gym. I used to hit the gym every single day without fail. But since I joined English class, so I need to get up on the gym. Actually, you can see that we cannot balance our life. So uh I hope, I hope that uh with uh the choice of choose uh learning something like English. And get up on the gym is uh can help me bring for me also a benefit to gain the knowledge. Yeah, that's all for my story. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Jessica, for the sharing, so I feel so warm that you mentioned my name. Just a little thing, so uh I brought her to her car. It's a it's a short distance, but she shared with me a lot of the things, so I think that it has a very one percent. And I thank you so much for the sharing that accomplished this year, yeah, I agree that actually life. Uh our work life actually cannot balance hundred percent, it's not think that hundred percent equally what you want to do. And you can, what we, I want to say is just cherish everything, this is what my comment. So thank you so much, sharing, for the sharing. Should I invite next? Uh can I invite, I think President? Yeah. She's just look at us on me, so I cannot waste this. Where is next?
Oh.
Ah.
Yeah, yeah.
Your turn.
Okay, uh which number not selected, yeah, number one.
Yeah, number one, alright, next. I think President Max, your question is, have you found work-life balance in this year? Have you found work-life balance in this year? I think President Max, over to you.
I found work-life balance. Um I've always been someone uh quite alcoholic. Um so, but this year I decided to change that. I I noticed that I always came or I always feel like I'm always busy, but when I reflect. Uh or I I analyze how much time I spend, maybe on even like social media. Seems like there's plenty of hours spent there. And once I start optimizing that, removing all these distractions and. Um started, um you know, joining postmasters was one of, one of. My ways to try to balance my work and also uh afterward. Also, um going for um sports. Uh I I do badminton, I also go for for jogs uh in the evenings. So this year, I think I I. My work-life balance has has been much better, of course, uh you know, with postmasters. Uh we do feel kind of a little bit more busy, but it's it's much better than. You know, uh what I had before, because it feels like I only have work. And when I come back home, because I don't have anything else, I might end up bring more work, or it's like, you know, go take my laptop and do something. You know, you just feel burnout at the end, and so uh. Yeah, so this this year definitely, I've I've managed to find that balance and hopefully continues the the years to come. That's all, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, I think President Max for the sharing. Yeah, I feel very glad that you have learned, you have found that work-life balance happened this year because. Previous year, based on my experience, I also, I'm not a work colleague, but I will try to fulfill my time with job. But after I joined postmaster, I spent another quarter of time to in postmaster, but after that I felt so boring. I felt I suffered, so I also spend my time to exercise or go swimming, everything, I try to do my time. But after that, I also felt that I'm so tired because I do a lot of thing, I don't have a. A good time for me for rest, so I decided I will keep me very busy on Monday until. Monday until Friday, but I was definitely free for uh such a weekday, a weekend. So I'm trying this work life, I hopefully that one is better for me, I can rest more. Alright, thank you so much. Next, may I invite who else? Let me try. Yeah. Ah, Adeline, you look so serious, I know you are ready for me. Alright, Adeline, come. Which number you want you want to choose? Very easy.
Number five.
Alright, number five. Alright, Adeline, what was your favorite memory of the year? Actually, for this year, what was your favorite memory for this year? You, I I sure that you have a lot of favorite memory for this year. Over to you, Adeline.
Thank you, table topic master Weiwei. For my first favorite memory, I think that um I got two. One is for my career, because uh my my wish. One is for my career, because, uh, my, my wish. For this year is move, uh, branches to branches, to my own new salon. So I think this will be already come true in this year. So for the second wish is my, I think is my. Um. How to say? My traveling, my traveling, uh, journey in this year. Because I think that, uh, for this year, favorite memory is I oversee, uh, compare. Last three, last three year is more often for this year, I already oversee three time. And coming soon, I will go China again for this month. So I think that is my more favorite journey for this year. I think is my. Um, I think it's, um, for my work-life balance for this year and also, uh, let me so feel memorable for this year. Compare last three year, because we are already, uh, shut down for so many year of the MCO during MCO. So I think after the MCO is my turn to work, work, move on and. I so sad about the Toastmaster, because I busy on my career and my family, so I so. Sad to my Toastmaster so many year already in Sutra, but I think that I haven't achieved my, complete my level five project. I hope that I can dream, uh, finish my dream for this year, for the pathway level five. Over to you, Toastmaster, uh, Weiwei, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Adeline, for the sharing, yeah, actually, I know Adeline was, was a very hardworking. Lady, hardworking lady boss, I always, I always call her as a lady boss. She's very, very hardworking, so she deserved to have a good rest, uh, to sharing. I can tell that she was super happy, super enjoyed with every single travel. So I also wish that you're, I get your dream, you come true, complete your level five as soon as possible. I will let Rijing know, Rijing, are you there, listen? Please, thank you so much for the sharing, um, Hi-Mon, would, I would like to check. Is my session still can move on or stand up, thumbs up?
Yes, we still have time.
Yeah, you still have time, uh, but I don't have much question left, probably two, so who would be the next? Let me see, who want to be the try? Uh, who want to try? Laiho or Rijing or Raymond, you want to try, just give a try, you still have time, I still have two question. After this, no more. Who else? If no, I will just call Ming. Masajin, you want to try?
Okay, hang, okay, mission number, yes, sir.
Okay, uh, before that, I will need someone who can assist, uh, uh, counter, record for Masajin. I assume there's someone who have been, uh, uh, the question for, uh, two. Oh?
Uh, I will choose two.
It's not mistake, it's not mistake, I was. All right, Masajin, your question is what is a lesson you learn this year that change your perspective? What is the lesson you learn this year that change your perspective? Hmm, Masajin, over to you.
Okay, this two thousand twenty four is actually a definitely a meaningful year for me. Because I underwent a lot of changes in my life. The first ever change that I made this year is to undergo a rotational shift in my workplace. Last year, when I joined my company, I was under general shift where I only work from eight AM to five PM. But this year I was transferred to some other department where I was required to work under rotational shift. Initially, I thought I wouldn't be able to survive my night shift at all, because my night shift is actually the most. Uh, busiest life that I ever underwent. My night shift actually starts from eleven PM until eight AM. Since the night shift is so busy, it usually finishes at eleven AM in the morning. So usually I work like almost twelve hours for my night shift. Initially, when my boss tell me that I have to do the night shift, I told them that I won't be able to survive at all. So initially, I under, underestimate myself that I won't be able to do this. But however, I just accept this challenge and I proved to my boss and myself that I was able to survive this journey. So what I learned is that, uh, we shouldn't underestimate ourselves. We should always take a try and accept the challenge so that we can progress in our life and achieve well in my career. When during the hurry riot time, the whole week I was actually subjected under a night shift. Where we analyze a lot of samples with a shortage of stuff. So me and my lab mate actually handled a lot of samples on that particular week. Where we managed to complete our targets. Due to the significant contribution to my company, I was able to get a good bonus for this year. That is one of the greatest, greatest achievement for this year, thank you, that's all from me.
Thank you, thank you for the sharing. Yeah, I believe that this is a very big changes of, even if you ask me, I think that I cannot do this, I cannot. It's very hard, actually, if you know that it's not enough sleep and then there's a lot of side effect for this and you don't have a more time for yourself or family. Because your rest time, your working time is totally different with others. So I, but I believe and when you accept this challenge, there's something changed for your life, but something you have learned from this journey also. Good, it's very good for you, best to you also. Okay, I actually still have last question for me, let me share my spirit again. Yeah. Yeah, a moment. Okay. So last but not least, I would like to invite, all right. Hang. Is it okay? Or who want to try? Last question. Yes, you are. All right, last question for you is number three, if not mistaken. Yeah, all right. Hang, how your question is what is something new you try this year? What is something new you try this year? Over to you.
Okay, good evening, fellow Toastmasters. Um, the, the new thing that I try this year, um, is actually, uh, Toastmaster. Actually, I never joined this kind of, uh, uh, group before, I was a pretty. Oh, I, I, I never joined this kind of, uh, group before and. I, I, I am very shy from speaking, speaking to, uh, the masses and also the people. So I'm very talkative in front of people that I know and especially my friends and my colleagues and also my family, but I'm very. Uh, in terms of like, uh, talking to strangers, I am very shy and after Eric and also Waging. Asking me to join them, uh, when I joined them, I know the environment of Sutra Toastmaster, what I'm on. And I was, uh, I was shocked. And not to say shock, I was, uh, I, I was pretty surprised how the things goes and now here I am, uh, Zoom Master. Uh, I, it's, it's, it's like a major shift for me and. And, um, I think this is a, one of the things that I never tried before this year. Um, that's it, over to you, Weiwei.
Thank you, thank you, Ping, for the sharing, yeah, also. Impressed that this is the one of the new things for others, but I think it's very good, this is a very good platform, good channel. Uh, I think it's very good for everyone. And like for me, personally, what is something I try for this year actually is, uh, start. I just start to, uh, try to try as an MC for the others event. I have tried a new shop opening, so coming this, I will have, uh, I will be the MC for one of the preschool days, uh, like. School performance or something else, so actually it's very, it's not my, it's a chance for me, I just try. I, I, I also know whether I will go this or not, but this is, let's say, is for another, uh, challenge, new challenge for me. Actually, I learned this skill from Toastmaster and I want to use this skill to give back to social if possible. So this is all my new challenge for this year, probably this will extend for next year as well. So I, I also want to tell everyone, anything that you learn from Toastmaster actually is, maybe it's another skill for you for future. You don't know where is it, you don't know when is it you apply it, but you learn first and you can get ready anytime and just apply it. But this is needed or others will invite you or others need you as well. So this is my personal thought for when I learn from Toastmaster, this is, I really appreciate this platform. Thank you so much for the, for all the table topic, my, uh, table topic speakers, my questions end from today. And before that, I would like to invite timer for timer report for this session, over to you, come.
Good evening, uh, here is my timer's report for the table topic session. Table topic speaker one, EJ On Andrew, spoke for two minutes and thirteen seconds. Speaker two, Jessica, she spoke for two minutes and forty three seconds. Speaker three, Max, he spoke for one minute and forty two seconds. Speaker four, Adeline, he spoke for two minutes and fourteen seconds. Speaker five, uh, Masagi, she spoke for two minutes and fourteen seconds. And last but not least, speaker six, Pang, he spoke for one minutes and thirty five seconds. So I'm glad to share that, uh, speaker one, three, four, five and six, except, uh, Jessica spoke overtime. The other five speakers spoke within time limit and they will be eligible to be voted as the best table topic speaker for the night, thanks.
Thank you so much, timer, so everyone, for those who is eligible for voting, please, uh, cast your vote for late, uh, later. And thank you so much, I will hand over to Toastmaster of the evening, Japin, over to you.
Thank you, Ee, uh, Tabletopic Master, uh, for your engaging, exciting and fun session. Uh, I especially like your feedback after each speaker's speech, well done. Next, uh, let's have the voting announce, uh, voting section. Uh, now, okay, please scan the QR code on the screen or click the link in the chat box to vote for the best speaker. Okay, could you share the link again? Good. It seems it's not working, I'll try. Anybody had problems in, uh, scanning? Everybody done? Yes, thank you, thank you for your response, now shall we move to the photo session? Photographer, please stand by. Yes. Buddy? Uh, yeah, hello, yeah.
Yeah, uh, President will help me, right?
Um, Claire, are you there?
There is not there.
Well, now take a group photo together, please turn on your webcam and put on your brightest smile. Hold your pose and say cheers, uh, Claire done, are you ready?
There is not around, right?
I think, I think we'll way, uh, help, Ken.
I can, but Claire is not here, so shall we wait?
I think Claire is not around, uh.
Okay, I take this, I also don't know how to do it, wait a moment, one, two, three. Now. I think, wait a moment, then, also do more.
Do we have another with a freestyle?
All right. One, two, three. Ayala, who is not looking at camera, again, again, one more, one, two, three. Please for three seconds, ayala, the guy is not.
Okay, Claire is here.
Okay.
Say another one?
Okay, okay, Claire, Claire, get ready. One, two, three. Okay. Done.
Thank you, Ee. Ee, all right, okay, now it is the break time, timer, how long can we take for the break?
Uh, moment, please let me check, um, I think we can have four minutes, we'll come back at nine oh one according to our schedule.
Okay, thank you very much, so we'll come back at nine oh one. Nine, nine o'clock, one minute. Thank you, see you later. Hi, everyone here again. And now it's nine o'clock and once again, so shall we come back? All our speaker and evaluator already come back? Can you share on your video, make sure you're already come back? Alright, so. Shall we start right now or what do you, Jamie? Alright, thank you, S A. Everybody will come back, feedback is the breakfast of champions. Evaluation is the heart of Toastmasters educational program. Giving and receiving constructive feedback is important, so we can all improve as a better speaker. For this, I would like to invite our junior evaluator of the day to lead the evaluation session. Please help me to welcome the patient mastery one, To Seeng Po. He's a passionate farmer, South representative who is a hoodie and excited about sports. This is also his first time being a G E, let's give him a big round of props.
Good evening, for your Toastmaster and guests, I'm Mr. Bo here and I honor to serve as your general evaluator for today's meeting. So the role of the, my role today is to evaluate, evaluate, evaluate the overall flow of the meeting. Provide feedback on how the meeting went and offer some suggestion for improvement. I will also introducing and evaluating our evaluator who will provide feedback on the prepared speeches. But before we dive into that, uh I'd like to introduce the evaluator who will be giving their evaluation today. I'd like to introduce our first evaluator. Toastmaster Guai Lai Ho, who will be evaluating, Toastmaster Hemarani, switch title, evaluation and feedback. I hope is a very over member of our club who bring great insight into speech evaluation. Please give them your full attention. So for evaluation, is evaluator is a, is a, allocated to uh treat to. Two minutes to provide, to provide their feedback on timer. So timer, I would like to invite timer to demonstrate the timer sequence.
Okay.
So. At one minute green light will be shown. At one minute and thirty second, your light will be shown.
Sorry, G, uh I think it should be two minutes and two minutes thirty seconds.
Actually, two minutes thirty second, uh your, like your vision, at thirty minute, red light will be shown. And then three minutes thirty second, red light will be, your vision. So thank you, uh timer for your import important role today. So I would like to invite I hope to evaluate, evaluate for uh. Toastmaster Hemarani's pitch. The voice is yours, because master Guai Lai Ho.
Thank you, and I audible and visible. Alright, thank you. Thank you, Toastmasters, M R N E for the heartfelt and insightful speech. And you have successfully delivered your presentation mastery level one speech. And your speech is actually mirrored the show and join us into the transformative journey of a teacher growth. So let me dive into the strengths and the quality that are munificent used in your speech. And how you build a lasting connections with your audience. First of all, you have a good opening by showing the visual aid, then we can see many girly pictures. From your sights and it makes your audience intrigued, wow. Put you profile as a professional teacher and we want to learn more from you, that is great. And next, you have a good opening balance. Uh. Opening uh speech body and the closing as well. Oh, and you did an excellent job organizing the street you were. You broke down your journey into the distinct face, allow us to follow along and text top of your growth. And your progression from a novice teacher to a more confident, confidence educators was smooth. And easy to understand and each stage of your journey was well explained and it allowed us to truly appreciate the depth of your experience. Well done, next, you have an emotionless appear in your speech. What I mean is, you make the all by reflecting on both the challenge of your intellectual and emotional. You show the quality of your taking on a sheet to lead the group. And you you are approachable, you are pushing, you're expressing your feelings in a healthy way. And you feel happy for other person's success. And then you expanding your abilities to think, understanding reason and use the critical thinking, critical uh critical skills to lead your team, well done. And next, yeah, I don't think a confident body language with the right culture, you maintain an outright purchase that is good. And you make a meaningful eye contact and you also always show your smiling face in front of the audience. Right? That in my suggestion for you to improve your speech is allow your long narrative or your storytelling. Well, you could incorporate some interesting curve in your storytelling, maybe how you manage to. Conquer your challenge in your team and what are the unforgettable things that during your journey as a teacher? They will make your impact on your speech and I noticed that. The whole speech are you a leg off, embrace the process, but how you could consider to give weight to the word by emphasis emphasizing certain word. You mean challenge, okay, everything is good. Overall. You are due vows for the those set up in your speech and I looking forward to your next speech, thank you.
Back to you, G. Thank you, Toastmaster, I hope for providing a very constructive feedback for the Toastmaster Hemarani's features. She, so now I write to invite the second evaluator. The second evaluator is.
Raymond.
Yes, uh is Raymond. So Raymond, Raymond will, will evaluate speech for one week in the street by the introduction to Toastmaster entry. Raymond has a keen eye for detail and will provide consulting feedback for the speaker. So basically, I can Raymond. To divert his evaluation for Toastmaster Wong Wee Ji, the for yours, Raymond Chi.
Thank you, Saint Paul, am I audible?
Yes.
Can I? Okay, first of all, congratulations to Wei Qing, you have completed your level two introduction to Toastmaster mentoring. I would say your presentation today is full encouragement and really informative. I especially like the way how you make a metaphor. Are you telling us when you are driving, if we found no direction, we lost direction, so what tools we going to use? We use Google GPS, alright, to find our direction to reach our goal. So similarly in life, if we are in the crossroad and we don't have the direction in our life, so what we going to do? We need a mentor to guide us, right, to share with the knowledge, to guide us to reach our goal, to reach the destination. So I would say this good metaphor is easily connected to the audience, you did very well, alright. So another thing I like is you did explain the important and benefit of mentorship. So this enable the audience a way that we can always improve. Our communication skill to the new high by the mentor sharing their knowledge, experience and guidance to us. And another thing you did very well is I like you share with us the story. You tell us about your mentor Eric, how he got you, motivate you, inspiring you. On the morning run and the metaphor, alright. So I believe every presentation have rooms for improvement, so today I have two humble suggestion for you. As your objective is introduction to Toastmaster mentoring. I would prefer to hear that you telling us, you share with us the toast master learning journey. Instead of morning run and metaphor and how your mentor Eric got you. Uh teach you. Share with his knowledge to bring you your communication skill to the new high, to the news, to the next level. And mentorship is about, is always a two ways communication, mentor and protégize. Not only you benefit from the mentorship, but your mentor also could benefit from this mentorship program. Alright, so all in all, I enjoy very much on your speech today and I look forward to your next inspiring speech. Back to you, General Evaluators and Paul.
Thank you, Raymond Chi, for your fruitful uh feedback for Toastmaster Wong Wee Ji. So now I like to invite, invite our, our last evaluator. Who is. Who is our Toastmaster Hemarani, uh she will evaluate uh feature. From Toastmaster Shang Hui Bing, the street title is know your sense of humor. Toastmaster Hemarani is a, uh is a school, uh school English teacher. And she always bring a great perspective and a positive approach to their evaluation, to her evaluation. So let give her a round of applause as she come, as she divert. We invite her to, to give her evaluation, the stage are the for yours. Toastmaster Hemar, Hemar.
Thank you, okay, um actually, I'm very nervous when I'm, uh you will wait, she on because it's just after my turn. But I really enjoyed when she's really excellent and engaging audience with her vivid storytelling. A worker variety was impressive, especially when she emphasized on bulbs and uh how she taught her kids on mathematics subjects. Stories, uh this kind of stories keeping us more captivated, I'm always looking at her and she keep on, keep on sharing. And she managed to account her house bulbs and I saw in the chat box and uh some say they are forty bulbs. Then after that, I counted at my house, I is really engaging storytelling. And I love uh her lesson learned that always believe in professional to do their part and save their time, energy and money, I really agree with you. And the part she can work on I is to further enhance her speech. Uh that you can work on your body language, it says chess using purpose, purposeful. Purposeful gestures to reinforce uh her message with your beautiful smiles and really enjoy your uh. Smiles each time you deliver, delivering your speech. Okay, the thing that you can challenge is for your next page, you can try stepping out of your comfort zone. By experimenting with the humor or the, or with the audience interaction to add variety. Overall, the speech is really impressive, looking forward more interesting stories from you in the future, thank you, over to you.
Thank you, Toastmaster Hemarani, for your insightful evaluation. Now we shall invite the timer to give. The timer report for all three evaluator. Let's welcome our timer, Toastmaster Khan Wimi.
Thank you, General Evaluator, here's my timer's report. Evaluator one, Guai Lai Ho, presentation mastery four, he spoke for three minutes and thirty two seconds. E evaluator two, Raymond Chi, spoke for two minutes and forty three seconds. And evaluator three, Hemarani, she spoke for one minutes and forty seconds. Unfortunately, evaluator one spoke uh two seconds overtime. While uh evaluator three spoke twenty second under the allocated time. So uh as a summary, only speak evaluator two, Raymond Chi is eligible to be voted as the best evaluator of the evening, thank you.
Thank you, uh Toastmaster Khan, for your precise timer report. Now is the time for the voting, we will be voting for our best evaluator for tonight. Since we are using online meeting, I would like to uh invite the two master. To share the QR code or and also share the link for voting in the check room. Uh dear Toastmasters, please cast your, your votes by scanning the QR code. You'll be given a five second for the vote, ten second for the. Done, so. So now we proceed to the next session. So now it's time for, for the grammar report, where we will hear about the use of language throughout the meeting. So now I would like to invite our grammar judge winner to give his uh report. The floor is yours, judge winner.
May I share screen? Thank you. Mister General Evaluate, Hello Toastmasters, good evening, is my screen clear enough, large enough? Visible?
Yeah, large and clear, they go.
Thank you. I would like to commend the following speakers for using the word of the day, which is munificent. They are Jacqueline, Peng, Hemarani, use it twice, twice. Go like hot ones, did I miss out anyone? I apologize, please type your name in the chat. As for the mispronunciation, sorry, as for the idioms, I've picked up the following people. Jacqueline once, Peng once, like hot once, if there are others because we have used the word of the, the idiom of the day. Please type your name in the chat, thank you. For the mispronunciation of words, they are as follows, colleague is often pronounced, mispronounced as colleague, it should be colleague, colleague. The word demonstrate is pronounced as demonstrate. Striving as as follows, striving, experience, applause. Hours, if you notice hours, the H is not pronounced, it's silent, same with the word honest, is not honest, is honest. Hours. Evening is always pronounced as, is mispronounced as evening. Correct is evening. If you notice, E V, evening. It is not evening, it's evening. The word protege, if you find it difficult to pronounce, say it slowly. Protege, protege. I picked the following improper use of English. May I know who can driving? Correct is may I know who can drive? You totally don't know how to going there. Better to say you don't know how to go there. I need to go even more earlier. Earlier is a comparative of the word early. Of course, the superlative would be earliest. Therefore, the word more is redundant. Just say I need to go even earlier. I will try to running back. Correct is I will try to run back. He lead a small community. You are speaking about an event that happened in the past. He led a small community. Or if it is present, he leads a small community. Stay passionate until you are success. The word success here is a noun. What, what you need is a adjective. Stay passionate until you are successful. I broken the adapter. Correct is I broke the adapter. My not certified electrician, better to say my uncertified electrician. We need to went to the store again. We need to go to the store again here. How many of you teaching your kids? How many of you teach your kids? I want to say sorry about myself. The speaker wanted to say, I want to say sorry to myself. He was doing a monologue, speaking to himself. I will be change all my clothes. I will change all my clothes. It make me very emotion. It make me emotional. I have time for my family more. The correct syntax would have been, I have more time for my family. Can I invite so and so? Better to say, may I invite? Because can refers to ability. Yes, you have the ability to invite. Correct would have been, may I invite? You are seeking permission to invite someone. Have you found work-life balance in this year? The, the word, the preposition in is unnecessary, is redundant. You can just say, have you found work-life balance this year? What was your favorite memory? You are referring to something in the present because you're asking a question, what is your favorite memory? Because you are, you are referring to the present. What is your favorite memory? I already oversee three times. The speaker could have said, I have already traveled overseas three times this year. Super happy, super enjoying. I'm sorry, better to say very happy and enjoying. After Eric and Wajing asking me to join, the correct word here is after Eric and Wajing asked me to join. I want to give back to social, social is an adjective. Better to say, I want to give back to society, a noun. Nine o'clock, one minute. This is a literal translation from Mandarin, I believe. Correct to say, one minute past nine or nine oh one. Speech full of encouragement, you may say, and encouraging speech. You share the story, you share the story because you are referring to something happened in the past. Each time you delivering your speech, correct would have been, each time you deliver your speech. On the excellent use of language, they are as follows. Jack, Toast Master Jacqueline mentioned the following phrases. Take stock of the past year, kickstarting our meeting program, sharp timer, inspiring sharing, heartfelt sharings, engaging, exciting and fun session. Toast Master He Marani mentioned collage of moments, munificent. I forgot the, the, the word that followed that, that uh, word of the day. Challenges are insurmountable, munificent, teaching, take stock of not only the achievements, nurturing creativity, keep me grounded, transcend the classroom, collaborative efforts, global advocacy, a ripple effect, or rather a ripple effort. Take stock of our own journey, no matter how daunting, be munificent with your time. Very good usage of the word of the day. One waging. Dynamic leadership level four mentioned, try to imagine that, keep the momentum up. Transform me from a nobody to someone. Stay passionate. Presentation mastery four, Xiang, Xiang Huipeng mentioned vintage style and incandescent light bulb. A lesson learned diverted my attention. Presentation mastery level five, Yong Ying Yi said, I do too much and I do not have the energy. Cherish everything. I'm not a workaholic. Adeline is a hardworking lady boss. All the best to you, the last but not the least. Ong Eng Ju said, it, it is always numbers. Jessica Tran, Tran said, I feel very guilty, a step out of my comfort zone. Toast Master Max Mahendran said, you just feel burnt out. I found my work-life balance. Presentation mastery level three, Adeline Chin said, I hope that I can finish my dream, complete my dream. But better to say, I hope I can achieve my dream would be best. Toast Master Vasaji said rotational shift. Try and accept the challenge to progress in life. Greatest achievement. Toast Master Wu Ping Hao said, I'm very shy of speaking to strangers. It is a major shift for me. Presentation mastery level one, Tosheng Pu, our general evaluator said, each evaluator will be given two minutes. What he should correctly said is each evaluator will be given two to three minutes. Constructive feedback, keen eye for details. Goy Lihao said heartfelt and insightful speech, munificent, he used the word of the day. Broke down your journey, take stock of your growth, truly appreciate the depth of your experience. You are approachable, upright posture, meaningful eye contact, conquer the challenges. Motivational strategies for level four, Raymond Chai said, a good metaphor, benefit of mentorship. Toast Master He Marani said, save their time, effort and energy, purposeful gestures. With that, I congratulate everyone for the use of the language, word of the day, the idiom of the day for our meeting this evening. Now back to you, Mister General Evaluator.
Thank you, Jacob Bennett, for your detailed grammarian report. Now we shall proceed to the next, uh, now is a time for the R counter. Where we can actually hear about any unnecessary fear or sound such as uh, ah, um, you know, and others that we use throughout the meeting. Now I'd like to invite our R counter Vasagi to give her R counter report. Please share your observation. The floor is yours, Vasagi.
Uh, good evening, everyone. I hope I'm audible to everyone. So now I'll be presenting my R counter report. The SAA, Miss Adeline, she has spoken eight possumers. Our acting president Max has eleven possumers. Our newly appointed V P E Raging has twenty-three possumers. Our T M E Jacqueline has six possumers. Speaker one as well as evaluator three, Miss He Ma has fourteen possumers. Speaker three, Xiong, has three possumers. Our T T M Y Y has nine possumers. Speaker one, E J Ong, has seven possumers. Speaker two, Jessica, has nine possumers. Myself has two possumers. Speaker six, Peng, has seven possumers. Our general evaluator Sheng Pu has nine possumers. E evaluator one, Lihao, has one possumers and evaluator two, Mister Raymond, has one possumers. That's awesome. Thank you. Over to you.
Thank you, Vasagi, for your attentive uh, R counter report. Now it's time for the timer report where we'll hear about how we adhere to the time they meet throughout the meeting. So I would like to invite our timer again, Khan, to provide his report. Please share your, the timing details with us.
Hi, good evening. May I say, may I share my screen? How do I share my screen? Or, okay. Can you see my screen? Yes, no. Yes, okay, that's good. Hi, uh, we started on time at seven thirty, seven thirty PM. And our special general meeting started at seven thirty-three and it ended ten minutes after, which is at seven forty-three. Fortunately, almost all our appointment holders spoke within their time limit. In specific, such as I spoke for one minute and thirty seconds, opening address to uh, two minutes and eleven seconds, hear me introduction, nine minutes, grammar report, eight minutes and sixteen seconds. But I believe we have every reason to acknowledge that effort by our grammarian Bernard. And last but not least, our counter report is fifty-eight seconds. So our break time started at eight fifty-seven and it continues at nine oh one. I believe we are still on time according to our schedule today. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, timer Khan, Toast Master Khan, for your precise and and accurate timer report. Yes, we, now we are just right here to the timing as per our schedule. So now I shall evaluate overall of, overall of our meeting. So overall, our meeting runs smoothly today with each segment starting and ended on time as shared by our timer Khan. And I would like to commend the Toast Master of the Day, Jacqueline, for managing the meeting efficient, efficiently and ensuring we stay on the schedule. And for the history of the Toast Master overview, you can skip for this part since there is no any uh, guests in today me, today's meeting. And also I would like to thank SAA to make sure all the role player are in before, before the meeting started. So for the tablet topic, I would like to commend the participant uh, participa- participation in the tablet topic session. The impromptu speeches were entertaining and and very interesting. Uh, the great job to Toast Master Donye with a very creative creation and also very simple and also attractive PowerPoint style. She's, she was very attentive uh, when the speaker was sharing their tablet topic uh, feature. And she also shared about her own uh, S P N also uh, insight. After the, the tablet topic, each speaker uh, completed their tablet topic session. However, there is some small suggestion for improvement could be met. Uh, such as maybe overview can uh, make it more creation. So in case there is more time, it will allow more more uh, participant uh, to, to attend in this uh, tablet of the session. So our, besides the our evaluator also provide a very thoughtful uh, feedback today. For example, Toast Master like Goy Lihao gave a very clear and concise evaluation of He Marani's speech. He highlight uh, his uh, He Mar, Toast Master He Man, He Marani's strength such as uh, she give a very good sport posture and also uh, give a very uh, very uh, some very good uh, give some very positive feedback on her uh, on her uh, speech. Besides that, he also offers some constructive uh, solutions such as uh, she asked the, she, she gave a suggestion to, to add some interesting curve uh, during the speech. And also they some that or process are being uh, doing the, throughout the, uh, she delivering her speech. He actually recommend the have, have, He Marani to, to emphasize on certain important words. Our second evaluator, Raymond Chai also deliver and rate a certain evaluation for Toast Master Won Beijing. He also noted some positive feedback uh, like how Toast Master Won, Won Beijing share about the story and how the man he spent uh, in, inspired him. Besides that, he also provides some helpful tips on how to make his speech uh, better in the future such as may probably Toast Master Won Beijing can share something related to the Toast Master in, during the, in, in his speech such as, as he can share uh, her, his learning journey through, in this Toast Master journey. Our last, not, but notice our last evaluator, He Marani, also share some variable insight. Also highlights some, some some important uh, suggestion that Shang can, can, can further improve her speech success. Shang can have more in, more interaction with the audience throughout her speech. I write to, I, I write to tense our timer Khan for keeping our time today and however, I noticed you, you didn't turn on your video when you share your timer or in the first two timer report. Also, you also didn't share the timer report for me in the, in the upcoming meeting. You can try to share the, your timer report if it's in the online meeting. Oh. Our check group, our grammar judge, give a rate, uh, details are grammarian book. Uh, there's no, uh, it's very, uh, yeah, it's very uh, very informative in your, in your grammar report. We very truly learn a lot from your, from your, from your grammar, grammarian report feedback. Our R counter Vasagi also done, have done very good job to keep track all the few words, however. Uh, they some suggestion you can make in your, in, in the next side, if you become the R counter such as you can try to share, share your R counter report. And this role are very crucial in maintaining the overall quality of our meeting today. So overall, this meeting has been a very uh, great success and, and we are seeing a very excellent features and a very effective iteration and a very strong participation from our members. And of course, there's always a room for the improvement and my feedback today is just uh, mean to encourage the growth of everyone involved. So let's continue to work together to make our, our next meeting uh, even better. So thank you everyone for today's effort. Then I look forward to seeing how we all contribute to improve and support each other in the future. Uh, back to you, Toast Master of the, of the evening.
Thank you, Sam Po. Thank you for your impactful and valuable feedback. After reflecting on your comments, I'm confident that together we can achieve a significant improvement in the next meeting. Thank you very much. It's impressive. This is your first time, then you have done a good job. Moving on, we'll have the award section, exciting moment. We are going to announce the winners for prepared speeches, table topics and evaluators. Dun 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 dun. Alright, okay, I should announce the result of our best speaker first. Okay, the best prepared speaker goes to who? Who is that? Prepare speak. Okay, this is Toast Master He Marani. The best prepared speaker goes to Toast Master He Marani Munni Sami. Give her a round of applause. Zoom Master, could you show him on the screen? And an acting president. And an acting president. Okay, photographer, please uh, stand by to take the photo.
All right, can I look and share this line up?
It's messy there.
No, hold on.
With you?
Um. If you like, okay, one, two, three. Okay, thank you.
Next. I'll announce the best table topics speaker, we go to. Who's that? Ong and Ju. Ong and Ju. Are you ready?
Okay, one, two, three. Okay, thank you.
Next, I'll announce the best evaluator. The award will go to. The award will go to Raymond Chai. Motivational strategies level four.
Alright, give a smile, one, two, three. Alright, thank you.
Thank you very much, photographer and all the winners, congratulations to all of you. On your very good achievement for tonight. Okay, now, uh, I will show invite our S U T M C A T president today. Uh, Toastmaster Max Mahendran to take the control of the meeting, Max, please.
Hi, um, do, do I announce the?
Oh, sorry, uh, I, I think I show, uh, conduct this as well, uh, announcement and activities. Next slide, please. Okay, uh, the next coming activity will be crowd mentor program. Uh, the organizer, uh, organizing chair be Vasaki, uh, could I invite Vasaki to give us a briefing on this? Vasaki, are you there? Vasaki? Alright, okay, I think I'll just brief you about this, uh, is coming, right, it's next week. Thirteen of December twenty twenty-four, it's on Fridays, online meeting. Uh, we are urging everybody to join this um, crowd mentoring program workshop. Uh, it will start from eight and ends at nine thirty, thank you. Next, continue. Hmm, yeah, Christmas is coming, Santa Claus is coming to the town, so we are going to have a celebration. Uh, this is a Christmas celebration, we have potluck, we have gift exchange, we have agreed that everybody. Uh, for count thirty ringgit for the gift exchange. All of you are welcome to join, uh, the date will be on eighteen December, Wednesday, seven to ten P M. It is our regular meeting as well, thank you. Looking forward to your part participation for this very joyful moment. Next will be the speaker's on two point zero, I think Wujing will be the. The organizing chair, right, Wujing, could you uh, talk something about this?
Yes, yes, yes. So we are holding the, the speaker's on, so. Uh, on the day and time, so for the member who wish to have a more speaker slot. Because our existing slot is quite bad and especially if uh, quite a lot of member. And we open this for new member to encourage and also the member who are. Uh, going to fighting their tribal crowd and also encourage taking this chance to, uh, to take a slot for this. Uh, so I will repose the. In the WhatsApp and refill fee to uh, put in your name, to take a role to be a speaker or to be a role player. Um, thank you.
Thank you, Wujing, for very uh, brief recall about that. And coming up, uh, is um, some giving, right? Uh, it is the promotion of our membership, uh, I will show invite. Dong Huiping, Huiping, could you um, brief us about this?
Yeah, thank you. So members, Toastmaster members. We have one um, promotion from Toastmaster International. Which uh, if we renew our membership by this month, before the thirty-first December. For the next term, so means that if you submit three hundred and fifty ringgit next term member fee. By end of this month, and then you will entitled this for travel back gift from Toastmaster International. Anybody not here? Is a, is a like the prepayment of the membership fee for the next term, means that you will renew your membership until September twenty-five. Two oh two five. But the, the requirement is must be before thirty-first of December, but you don't give me at the last day. Because I need to register, so you better give me at least one day earlier. Yeah, then you can take all the four bags with the four different sizes. It's good for the traveling use, you can put inside your luggage and it's a very convenient during a packing. Okay, thank you, back to you, T M B.
Yeah, thank you, um, Xiaoping, uh, I think probably uh, are the sizes given uh, for the bags. I mean, what are the sizes for these four bags?
Uh, there is some information later I share in the group, yes.
Yeah, I, I got the input to know about the sizes, so that we can see whether they are suitable for us or not, thank you.
Thank you.
Continue, I would like to invite our acting president, Toastmaster Max Mahendran. To take the control of the meeting. Ma- Max, please. The prize is yours now.
Okay, Jacky, thank you for running the show today very smoothly. Uh, first of all, I would like to thank everyone who took part in our special general meeting. And to Waging, congratulations and wish you all the best, all the best for your new role. Having a strong team is crucial uh, for our club's success and I'm excited to see what you can do together. Taking stock of tonight's meeting, I'm reminded of why this is such a special place. The magnificent spirit of support and encouragement that flows through our club is what sets us apart. It helps each member achieve their personal and professional goals. Uh, we don't have any, any guests today, so to all our members, thank you for your continued dedication and support. As we approach the new year, let's carry forward the lessons we've learned and the confidence we have built throughout this year. So on behalf of Club President Claire and the entire executive committee, I declare this meeting adjut. Have a wonderful evening and we look forward to seeing all of you in this meeting.